All right, Rowena, you are now hosting. Oh, and audio video?
Yeah.
I don't think I can because I just got rid of my hosting ability. Oh, let me, I can reclaim host, hang on. Okay, I'm getting rid of a host, my hosting again.
Audio. See if we can get Brian in here. All right, I think. I think that might work.
Ginny is on the Zoom.
All right, Zoom land, can you hear us? Somebody give me like a... Yes, yes. Oh, good, I got a thumbs up.
All right.
I think we're good, just talk loud.
All right, I'll lead the order at six o'clock. Congratulations. All right, I don't have any adjustments to the agenda. Okay, I've got a motion to approve the minutes. We'll start with the minutes from the last regular board meeting, August 19th, 2020. Anybody? Kathy, second. Amber, discussion. All in favor? That is unanimous, passives. And now I'm wishing to approve the events of the special board meeting, August 27th, 2020. Second, Amber, stick to that. Discussion. All in favor? Unanimous again, passives, thank you.
Brian, don't forget you do have Ginny in Zoom land.
Did you approve both of those?
Jimmy, Ginny, do you approve both of those? Nope, she's not.
Do I have what?
Oh, hold on. Try now, Ginny.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Ginny, do you approve the minutes for both the August 19th meeting and the 27th? There's no way around it. Is she, is she here?
Ginny, can you hear us?
Once again?
Do you approve the minutes?
Yes. Yep.
All right, thank you. Any hopes, comments? Nothing? All right. Karen, I just want to take a second to recognize the independence of the administration, the staff I've put into getting the school year started this week. I walked around today and it's like, it's like they've been doing this for much longer than two days of having kids in the school. And there's two things that the staff anyway say, one is that they're so excited to be back, so excited to see their kids again. And then they're also like a little, they don't want to jinx it, but they're surprised things are going so smoothly. And I would say you're probably not giving yourself enough credit. The reason it's going so smoothly is because of all the thought, the energy, and the time that's been put into making this go the way it's gone to this point. Doesn't mean there's not going to be hiccups, but when you have a plan put together as thought out as this one was, that's the reason that it's going like this. So, thank you again for all the, all the effort put into this. Chris?
Thank you. I'm going to echo that and I want to say thank you to all the RSU 78 school personnel. The things that you all did was just beyond expectations. And to open up the way we have is, is a credit to you all. And the other is to thank the school community for your support. It's been there, we know, there's been questions, but you allow us to answer those questions and to bring thoughts back. And of course, towards our community, but you know, we feel the support from you. And that's, that's so important for us as educators, that what we've done is being supported by the school board. And the only other thing I have to say is, stay tuned.
Can I, real quick, I meant to say one other thing. Thank you to Mary and Deb for volunteering to take the empty slots in Sandy River and Ray really appreciate it. All right, Georgia.
Well, I just kind of like to start off by saying, I heard something this morning that really made my day. This is Savage, she was outside with the kids and she was like, how many years have we had two first days of school? And, and I thought that was really awesome. And I think that that's sort of the mantra of our staff right now. They, they really are looking for positives and, and just really go on, go rolling with it. And, and you know, willing to, to just see what happens. And I think that's just, it's so amazing. And I couldn't be happier at how this week has gone so far. It's just been, I'm, I'm just truly happy. I think the kids, the kids have come in, they've been calm, they've been, they've been, I think, really excited.
All right, thanks, Georgia. The most people who have tonight, the committee reports, start with policy committee. Kathy?
Well, we have a meeting on September 11th. And we have a lot, and because of last month, we put off voting on, we have a lot of stuff to cover on the action items, but when we get there, I'll explain it all. And then the next meeting is going to be, the next first Wednesday of October is actually the day before the first Thursday in October. And so either, I sent out the committee an email today, either we'll meet the 30th of September, or if there's nothing pressing, we can meet, just wait, put it off till November, which is kind of where I'm leaning because my sister's coming to visit. And that is okay with everybody.
Finally.
First Wednesday in November.
Finally.
Thank you all. So we're not going to meet then until November. So November, okay? Thank you.
Okay, thanks Kathy. Finance committee went today to discard this. There wasn't a whole lot to discuss. The CRF funds, which are the front of Irish relief funds. There's still a decent amount in there, those need to be spent by December 31st of this year. There is some talk that there will be more for the following semester, but that's not a guarantee yet. There's also some separate funds that also go along with COVID type stuff. I don't know what it stands for, but ESSRF. That's different, there's, we don't have to spend until September of next year. So the priority is going to be to use the CRF funds first and then use those as the backup. One thing we're going to vote on tonight that we approved in the finance meeting is expending $75,000. It's in the student staff support reserve fund for a behavior specialist who has already been hired. And also that money will also go towards when we do get a licensed therapist that we're currently trying to fill that spot right now. So we'll talk about that and the action items later. And another note, there is going to be an assistant businessman.
Lost the sound again.
You're welcome.
Facilities, Ginny can...
Yes, can you hear me okay? Hello?
Yes.
Okay, good. Actually, they've been very busy in the building taking care of things. The bill, the classrooms have all been prepped, rooms, tables replaced with desks, and everything they don't need taken out and stored in the storage units. At the end of every class, whenever they change, whether it's elementary to art or when they go up to, you know, any other activities, high school, in between classes, they're out there cleaning the rooms between classes. So when the new class comes in, it is not going to, it'll be all clean for them. Transportation has been going okay, they only have two bus runs and they clean after the first run in the morning and again after the runs for the afternoon. Seth's office is coming along, he can use it. It doesn't have the right electricity at this point, but the, and the door isn't on, but those will be taken care of and you can use it even better. Let's see, there's new glass in the entryway where the receptionist sits. And if you have any questions about these, I think Seth Jeff is there, he can answer them or I can. And last one is tents. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. And the last one, they've had tents donated for now from Saddleback and from the Heritage Trust. These are being set up outside so that in inclement weather, the kids can still get out and take a break. And also for outdoor classes, sometimes those will be happening. So it seems like they're very, very busy, which I expected, and doing well with, they felt everything was going smoothly for the first two days. That's it.
All right, thanks, Becky. Seth, take a little report.
Yeah, we all have this idea in theory of what wanted to happen and they have all kind of made it happen or beginnings of making it happen. So we'll talk more about that, I think, when we can give a review of how things have been going. But they've all worked extremely hard, you know, in each grade span to do what works. And yeah, this is a lot of hard work and lots of hard work. Guess that's all I got for that yet. We're doing it, so where we are. But I'll speak more to what's going on maybe too.
All right, thanks. We do have an adjustment to the agenda that just came up, so we can call this item 7A, appointments and resignations. Do you have?
Usually they're on the agenda. My glasses on too. We have Linda Fines, she's our behavior specialist. That was part of the budget and we intend to do them, she's actually underway. Part of what we're planning for our kids.
Her, an interesting point, her and our new P E teacher come from the same school district in Florida.
Is that right?
And didn't know each other.
It was calling you. Or they got me.
All right, on to...
We need to hold on that.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
Okay. So need a motion to approve the appointment of the behavior specialist. Yes, Linda Fines. Second. Karen, thanks. Discussion. All in favor? Ginny?
Ginny, yes. Who is yes?
One of us, Linda Fines, the one who is the behavior specialist. Thank you. All right. They got him for the night, the school opening update of the administration.
Okay, I think what might, I think the best way to start this meeting is to get an update on the staff on standard operating procedures. That's what I, you guys. So I'm going to do my best to talk as loud as I can for those. So on August 26th, 28th, I can't remember the exact day, Chris, I think we said that was the 28th. We were sent a standard operating procedure from the CBC as far as how it pertains to schools and how it, what procedure would be if we did have COVID cases, whether it be staff or students. Interestingly enough, if you want copies of the whole thing, I can get them for you. But the parts that I wanted to make sure that you guys saw started on page four. And if you read through that, it gives a scenario based on classrooms. Initially, we...
What happened?
Purpose of it is to make it easier for contact tracing for schools. And it guys outlines here that a couple of different incidences. If we had one or two confirmed or probable cases in either a student or a staff member who stay in one single classroom, which is kind of what our K5 does for the most part. They are actually considering every student and staff member who is in that room to be a close contact. So everybody would have to quarantine. For our middle school and our high school population, this number two would pertain to them because it states that if they go into multiple classrooms, any student or staff member that was also in those classrooms throughout the day is now considered a positive, a close contact. So you're looking at potentially an entire middle school or high school wing having to be quarantined. So that was a change, I just wanted to make you all aware of that. For after school activities, you know, at some point that is going to come up is anybody that's pretty much playing on the same team or involved in any of those activities together is going to be considered a contract and would have to quarantine. So I'll update you on that, that part of it. Questions on my field answer about that? Yeah.
So does that change our strategy on this six persons?
It potentially could change it. Most definitely, interestingly enough, it is that it, no matter what the setup is in the classroom or what base coverings are being used regardless, so potentially it could. But that being said, we do still have that teachers still have to try to maintain six feet when feasible as much as possible. And students who have to wear a face shield still have to sit six feet from their peers. So if you have a classroom that has three feet of everybody, that student can still have to be six feet from others. And we do, we do have some kids that have already have those providers note for that to happen. The other, other, those were the two big things that can still affect the three foot or six feet. Okay, so what I passed out, one of the pieces of information that you all wanted to have tonight was the information about enrollments. Thus far this year, we are at 28 new enrollments. And right now, without pre-K in the building, our total enrollment, I believe, is at 193. We had, we did all, we also had some students leave our district too, so kind of bounced out a little bit. With pre-K here, I believe we'd be up around 210. And so what you're, what, what, what I've sort of presented to you are what the total occupancy numbers are at six feet. So this is based on six feet right now. And then what the total number of students are currently for each classroom. Now, keep in mind that right now, that, that's split. But if we were to go to the hybrid one, that would be the number that we'd be looking at for each classroom. So, you know, as you can see, some of the classrooms, like grade three, you know, numbers are down, that's, that's completely doable. Then if you look at middle school science, science class allows only 10 students right now at six feet. So we get, so we would get ourselves into a little bit of trouble if, if, you know, we stayed at the six feet. Right? And then the high school, I, I gave you the numbers of each of the grades, but at the high school levels, the kids break down and, you know, depending on the classes that they're taking. Some classes are smaller, some classes are bigger. Seth, you said, I think the largest class would be around 16.
Well, actually, there are new enrollments, like very recent enrollments. A high school is now 18 for ninth grade, so up four kids. Same for 10th grade, up to 18 for 11th grade, and up to 16 for 12th grade. So that's four, seven, you have 10 new kids in the school.
Is that in addition to the new enrollments number then?
No, no, I think just this, these, yeah. So we have those numbers sort of a little low. But like she said, since we break them up, the only area right now in our schedule that we have all of them together is the freshman, which is 18 kids, but we only have them for P E and health together and they've been using the gymnasium. So our other biggest group, we would have an English group of 14 per month. So we have pretty bad numbers. Class numbers went way up.
Yeah, and that, and those numbers, just to clarify, the, you know, that includes one teacher, as it says, but it doesn't include any aides. And so some of these classroom, classrooms also have a special education aide attached to them. I was just wondering, the number of remote only students or? Up around 20. Home school students, new home school students. I think we're upper, I'm, I'm, I'm giving you an approximate number because I don't have the, the actual number, but I think we're at between 18 to 20 fully remote. And I believe we're at about 11 home instruction. So are these numbers with those kids out of it? Yes. So these are the kids that come into the building? Yes. Okay. Thank you.
I just, that at the quarter, they have the option, so those remote students, if they wanted to come back in, the number could change.
The first Friday in November.
November 5th. I should know that because I plugged. I don't remember.
Anyone else?
That's, unless you, unless there are other questions you have for me, that's, that's what I have. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have, except you want to talk a little bit more about the instructional academics.
Yeah, so we did our first two orientation days, that was, that worked. You know, at the high school level, we met in the gym in the morning, showed the kids about Google Classroom, how to manage email account. I mean, a lot of things that are crucial for making, like this hybrid model work. Little school did the same thing, elementary, they all had had their own transition plan. The big questions are going to be rise tomorrow. We didn't do any remote, we didn't try to do any, you know, synchronous learning yet. So we're prepped for it, but I mean, you know, I was on Facebook the other day, I saw a daily that has a college student home. They're like, our internet was down, they couldn't do their virtual learning. So tomorrow, we're going to really is when we, you know, start this great experiment, see if it's going to work. We have everything in place, but after tomorrow, we'll have a good sense of other issues we have to solve. It'll be nice to get through, like see how the account internet holds up through like a week. We told the kids, if you're in us down, you let us know. And as if we get too many calls in, we're going to like send out a reminder since we know there's issues. If you do not have to contact the school, we know there's a problem. But you know, as far as the beginning and prepping the kids, I think it went outstanding. I've already said the kids were, I feel like I underestimated the kids. They just came in, it was like, so they got here, we were in the building by 7:56 this morning. I went to the gym, I talked to the high school kids and I did a lap. And by 8:30, everyone was like doing, like learning activities, sitting in the rooms, masks on, six feet apart. I mean, it was, it was amazing, it was something to see, I couldn't believe it. But yeah, I think tomorrow's going to be our first big test. And we're keeping it pretty low key, like the high school teachers, it's not huge lectures going to happen. And we're just going to see if we can get them into the classroom. So we'll see, then Monday and Tuesday will be the next big task for our, like, little Wednesday to kind of regroup if we have to and change some things. So yeah, we're basically relying, our whole plan hinges on quality internet, Zoom, being able to handle everything and CSO and stuff. Like we talked to a guy from Zoom to look at buying a plan, we had to. Zoom is continuing the free plan into the fall, like unlimited meetings, you don't get all the bells and whistles, but you can have long meetings. On March 9th, they had, it's like 10 million users worldwide, by March 15th, they had over 300 billion. And as schools roll out, I assume their load on their whole plat, I don't know how they manage this with their platform. So our whole plan is hinging on things that are out of our control, which makes me a little bit, you know, I don't like all those things I can't try to figure out. But we'll see. I'm feeling good, just realized I'm consolidated.
Yeah, and we do.
Sorry.
We have been working with LTI, knowing that this is coming too. So our bandwidth is going to be, is in the process of being doubled here in the building, but it hasn't happened as of yet. As you can imagine, they're very busy, probably with other schools, but it is in the process of happening. And one other thing that we put into place was Shelley La Liberty. She is actually serving as our remote learning teacher. So she's working with the students who are fully remote at the elementary level. So she meets with them, you know, pretty much on a daily basis and is working with families to, you know, help support them and coordinate all of that. I think that was one of the things that we heard loud and clear from the last board meeting, that parents really wanted some support with that. So she is serving as that person to do an amazing job. They all are doing an amazing job. I just can't believe what an unbelievable staff we have. They, they, you put them to a task and they will make anything happen. Just crazy. They, they, you put them to a task and they will make anything happen, it's just crazy.
I guess I'd add too, is like for the board, as we move forward, like if you're working with community members and stuff, because there's undoubtedly going to be hiccups, is just to see, you know, we're going to take that, and we're going to rework it and make something that works. So just because, like, we maybe didn't do exactly what we said would happen on Monday, there's probably a really good reason why that didn't happen, and we're going to work to solve that. But they will, we will need that, we're helped with, you know, the P R piece of, we're working extremely hard. Some days it may not work, but we're going to do our best to take your work to support teachers.
I will add that I just got approached by two families as I was coming here today, tonight. And I guess maybe a group might be going to see the selectmen or the town manager in hopes that maybe the town might do something for internet, maybe to help some of these families they've I don't really understand it because I don't know what my internet is, the kids and my husband takes care of it, but I don't know what the price is. But I've been told by these two families that to update so that they can do the schoolwork at home, it's costing considerable amount of more money. So they are going to the town. So I'm just throwing it out there that maybe you was, or maybe us, board administrators, maybe you want to talk to Steve Bilbert or whoever, I mean, I don't use the slot person. Maybe say if there's a need or other parents contact you to say what they've had to pay to, so they can do their home internet.
Yeah, that's a big, that's a really big issue. We've been trying to work with families, and it's kind of, um, it's a little bit of a tricky issue because if you live in an area where you don't have cell service, internet isn't virtually impossible. And so that's, that's the tricky part for us. But obviously, in a situation like that, we're going to, there has to be some flexibility in what the expectations are for these students.
Well, that's, that's sort of what I told them, but I didn't discourage them not going to the town. There might be something, a grant or something that's out there that he may not know about, that the town may come up with. I usually have good internet, but I didn't want to tell him that, because it's still not available, I don't have it, you know?
Right.
You know, my kids, one of them was right here in town, and when they're all on here at the school, they don't have it at their house, so go figure.
Yeah.
So I don't.
I just want to say two things. One, even sitting here tonight, we've had issues running this Zoom freezing. So just, it's going to be an issue, and we're going to have to roll with it and figure it out. And two, as a parent, I live less than a mile from the school, and I had to pay over a hundred and fifty dollars to try to double my line, and it didn't increase my speed at all. So I'll have four students trying to Zoom in.
Well, if I need these parents on my way back to work tonight, I'm going to tell them that, so maybe they'll.
Yeah, it's more like, I mean, no difference to my internet at all.
Thank you, Amber, for that feedback, though, that's important.
And I obviously wasn't part of the spring conversations when you had to do this in a very short period of time. But have you identified where the connectivity issues are? I mean, do we have some kids in the plantations who have no internet?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do.
And how, how are we getting?
There's no internet, there's no cell service for them, so that's a problem. And getting internet, yeah, getting internet connected, like, I don't, I think in one area, I'm not even sure internet is even an option for this family. But the, the, what I can say is the student is very young, and so what, what's being given, there's some progression happening. So we're working with that family to make sure that that happens. And that, that's one family that Shelley works, is working with.
And I know in some school districts, they actually put hotspots on schools and drive them into areas to enhance internet, but I don't, I don't know if that's an option for us.
We've, we've been installing hotspots in homes where it will work.
Okay.
But again, getting the hotspots even right now, it's like a two-month wait to get them, and it's not an easy process, but, you know, so we're trying to, yeah.
And like you said, it all, you need cell service.
You need cell service to have that, yeah.
Can you go, can you talk about, um, just some lessons learned from these past few days? Things that went well and things that didn't go well, how did the, um, serving food in the classrooms, that kind of stuff?
I can talk about serving food. I am the part-time kitchen helper that we could not find. So I come in, I was trying to hire like crazy. No, that's actually going really well. We have Lori is doing outstanding job, we have our husband Dennis in here helping, and it's just, they're working so well together. And, um, yeah, it's busy, so we're rolling food down to the, the grade span areas. And right now, we, we have a big cart coming that's going to make it easier, but right now, we have to kind of make the meals in the hallway and hand them out, so that's a little slow. We have one coming where we can preload all of our trays and load it into the thing and bring those down. So yeah, we deliver. Lori and Dennis bring, come back upstairs to reload it, and I stay down there with this big green bin and help the kids, I collect their trays, we put in solution to pre-rinse, then I wheel that thing around, and it's been going really well, but it's, we start, I guess, they do morning breakfast for K through eight at roughly eight to eight-fifteen or so, eight-thirty. Then high school breaks at nine-twenty-five, pretty much from nine-twenty-five right through until about twelve-thirty, it's kind of moving, like, they do high school break, go upstairs, and then ten forty-five is K two, eleven-twenty. It's busy. Yeah, I've been pushing this thing, I can tell you the whole story about that big green beast. I'm boss, I'm, I'm, I'm responsible for that, and somebody else will tell you the story of what I've had to do to that. I, I've cut the sides off it, I built the, oh, yeah. I, we bought it and delivered it, it comes to school. Like, it is the outdoors. So yeah, it does now. It does now. But anyway, no, that's going well, um, we'll be much better off, we have a big, that, the Cambro sixty tray, and our lunch tray slipped right in it, like, this way. Now, like, a huge difference, especially like tomorrow's pizza day. Today was kind of a light order day, but tomorrow will be busy, so it'll kind of test us a little bit more. But if it's working, the kids are eating. Yeah, but the lesson learned from that is, um, read for understanding when you're ordering a bit. That's been my biggest hassle, is that thing right there, of the whole thing.
So one of the challenges, obviously, Brian, with that is that we have, we have a lack of manpower.
And Lindsay, nothing has changed about needing those six-foot separation while you're eating a masthead.
That is still, that's still a firm guideline, firm guideline. But yes, requirement, they have to have six feet to play the game, yep.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, thanks for, um, the updates, we'll do that again, uh, the special board meeting in two weeks as well. Next item, Jeff. Fall sports updating. So again, I'm going to give Jeff a little cover here. We had this item on the agenda prior to, three hours ago, when the M P A put out their latest guidance on fall sports, Chris, do you want to?
Oh, yeah, that's why I said hold on. Main Principles Association, the M P A, has been meeting since last week with the Department of Health and Human Services, Department of Education, Governor's Office, and the Navy Superintendents Association with regards to having fall sports. And we've been waiting for the report to come out, and it came out at three o'clock this afternoon. With that, that will then now, that will go to the Main Principles Association Sports Medicine Committee, who will vote on that plan. That plan, if it receives approval from the Sports Medicine Committee, will then go to the Interscholastic Management Committee. And that can be found on mpa.cc. That's where you want to go, that's the Main Principles Association's website. That then falls on our shoulders, being, and I'm reading right from there, what they released today. "The local school districts, based upon their capacity, but implementing the health and safety guidelines." So in other words, you as a school board, as a local authority, are going to have to decide whether Rangelay participates in fall sports, which would be soccer, cross-country, golf. The consistent with this is what's called the D H H S Approved Community Sports Guidelines. What we are asking is that on Tuesday, we're looking at Wednesday, but on Tuesday, at six P M, down in the gymnasium, because we will have parents as well as students, I'm sure, coming in to talk, we'll have to make a decision on what we're going to do with fall sports. And it's not fair to anybody in this room, anybody that's listening on Zoom or anybody involved with sports, to make a decision based on a report that came out about three hours ago. And there's a lot to it. There is a, I'll just say a lot to it. And it is frustrating, I have voiced my frustration before, and I'll voice it again, is they put this out, and there's not even a start date on it. So in other words, it was pushed back until this coming Monday, a week or so ago. But yet, we now have to go to our local boards for approval, and it's Thursday af, Thursday evening. Our coaches have to take some, a couple courses online. We, as a school district, have to come up with a, help me, it's a form. As far as, like, making parents aware of like a release. Like a release. I'll just, I'll leave it at that.
So we're getting, I know we're getting special board meeting to death here. I agree with Chris, though, it's a forty-three-page document they just put out. There's no point in getting into the details of it here without everybody having read it. So we'll meet again on, on Tuesday, and hash this thing out. I think that's the plan.
And please bring questions, so that we can answer the questions that you all have. Because I will tell you, one of the questions that keeps coming up amongst superintendents is, sports will be under these guidelines, our students in school will be under a different set of guidelines. How can we, how can we mesh those so that, you know, we allow the kids to play sports, which, you know, we all know that especially seniors and, and this, this, they look forward to their senior year, but yet, we've got kids that we're limiting what they can do, I E, band, phys ed, other fine arts, because of the distance that they have to go. So it's a real difficult decision that has to be made. And now, I'll just, like I say, I'll leave it at that. I will tell you that both football and volleyball have been, uh, put on the not-allowed list. So there will be no football, interscholastic football or interscholastic volleyball in the state of Maine for the fall sports season.
So Chris, if, if there's going to be a special board meeting this coming Tuesday at six o'clock, either the gym?
Yes.
Open to the public?
Yes.
At which time we'll discuss this forty-five page, forty-three page document.
Correct, the, the, the consideration will be either the approval of fall sports at Rangelay or not allowed. And that's, there's decisions that we've been facing as superintendents and administrators, and you with school board members. Through this whole process, this is just one more that's coming to us, based upon a document that came out really this afternoon.
That's it.
This document is on this M P A C C.
I will get, so I'll, no later than tomorrow, I'll email all board members the full document.
But if, you know, if we've got nothing to do tonight, you want to check things out. No football starts nationally.
Anything else on that? Okay. The action items, the first one, uh, I need a motion to authorize to extend the seventy-five thousand dollars in the Student Staff Support Reserve Fund to employ a behavior specialist. Jeff? Second? Paul? Right, so this, I touched on it a little bit, uh, in the committee report. We put this in the reserve fund in the last, the budget for this year specifically for, uh, this purpose. The behavior specialist is already hired, um, full-time. We are still currently looking for a licensed therapist, but in order to meet both of those payroll salaries, we now need to, um, vote to extend the money that we set aside for this. I don't really have anything else to add to it, anybody have a question about what, what it's for? I guess one thing that did come up in the committee meeting is, the question was asked, if for some reason we had to go to a remote-only learning, would they still be able to, would students requiring the specialist still be able to, to see her? And the answer is yes, and it, it could still be in person as well, as long as all the, you know, applicable distances and everything are, are being met. So the answer is yes, it would still be something that we could take advantage of, even if we had to go remote. Anybody have any questions about it?
Brian, could you just share a little bit of background about Linda Fein?
I can't.
A little bit of background about Linda Fein?
I can.
Oh, great.
So Linda, um, who has like thirty years of experience working with, um, behavior students. She has worked in a district that, um, has, that takes, in Florida, I guess they have a very progressive approach to discipline, um, so she's worked under many, many B C Bs. She served as a special education director, um, that's where her background really lies, is in special education. But has devoted most of her teaching career to working with students with behaviors. She's very, very, um, very, very bubbly, and, um, what I've noticed so far, um, I'm, I'm super impressed with. She's, she's got a special, she's got a special way about her, um, and she's, she's, she's a go-getter. So we're lucky to have her, we really are. Her husband, I think, um, has been coming to Rangelay, as with most all the employees that we hired. They've been coming to Rangelay. Own place here, and they're just going to move, and it's worked out for their family, so, yeah. You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Will this, um, new hire change any of the roles of the current staff?
No, no.
So everyone else who would technically take care of, like, the behavioral teams for will still?
They, they, they may get involved initially, um, but, um, the, everybody, you know, all of the student services, the whole student services team, each one of them in the building serves a different role. So they all play a very different. That the families might be having. They, she might, um, talk to a child in the short term, you know what I mean? But, but, you know, the roles are very different, she's going to be much more interactive, I believe, with our social and emotional curriculum this year, and that's going to be a huge focus for us. So our, um,
So our, um, our support staff are, um, you know, are being trained in that. Um, so that we're all speaking the same language. If, if our therapist comes on board, she will also be trained in it. Our behavior specialist has already done the training. Um, so there, there's a real heavy focus on the social and emotional learning.
Of authorization to expend the seventy-five thousand dollars in Student Staff Support Reserve Fund to employ behavior specialists. Everybody in the room is unanimous. How about Claire and?
Claire says yes. And Jenny, I can't see you, so. Jenny? I can't see her or hear her.
Okay.
So.
It's irrelevant. It passes. I'll, uh, I'll try to find out, Jenny, how she voted. Uh, all right, thank you. I feel the need to apologize for Kathy here. We got a bunch of policy action items to take care of here. And the reason that there's so many of them is because of that marathon board meeting last month. I asked her if we could put this off. Um, so this, all of these being thrown at us are not her fault, it's my fault. So the first one, uh, is a motion.
Where, um, have to do with a contract with MSMA. And that contract is now expiring. And we own the devices that it's referring to, so we don't need them anymore essentially. So we'd be, we'll just rescind them. And then JKB and JKD have to do with, um, detention and suspension of students. And those two topics are covered in our student handbook, which is policy. So we don't need them in the manual. And so we, uh, this is just going through a whole review of the policy manual and trying to update it, get rid of what we don't need, et cetera. So that's what, that's all about. So we just decided to rescind this.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor of rescinding policies, IJ and CI, IJ and C dash F, IJ and C dash R, JKB and JK D.
Claire, are you good?
Yes. We got Claire. That's, motion passes. Next one, we got a motion to revise policies, ACA, ACA dash R, ACAB and ACAB dash R.
I have a motion to revise them.
Mary, all right. Kathy?
Okay, these, um, four policies have to do with, um, student harassment and, um, mental block.
Sex harassment. Student sexual harassment.
Yes, student, yeah, bullying and, not bullying, but sexual harassment and, um, apparently there's been a big change in, um, the law. And so MSMA, um, rewrote the, all these policies. And, um, when they sent them to me, they sent them with a little, I have to take this off to talk, I'm sorry. Um, they sent it with a little preface saying that if we, recommending that we, um, use, we, and they very rarely do this by the way, uh, recommending that we accept these policies verbatim as they wrote them. And that if we did want to change any of the writing they recommended, we get a void. So, um, we have just, um, everybody got them, right? So we have just decided that we're gonna put them in our manual, replace the ones we have with these. And, um, we're gonna put them in our manual as recommended by MSMA.
And to add to that, Title, Title Nine.
That's right, it's the Title Nine.
Right. Title Nine is the driving force behind these changes because it was needed to do broad integral policies.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor of revising policies, ACA, ACA dash R, ACAB and ACAB dash R.
Claire's a thumbs up.
Unanimous then? Still, uh, I'm aware about, um.
She's fro, she's frozen.
All right, motion passes. We got a motion to revise of our code policy, IJ NDB dash E.
Uh, okay, IJ and E.
Let's get a motion, I'll practice.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Yes? Second? Amber? All right.
All right, so IJ NDB dash E. Uh, first we're re-coding the E to the R only because we're trying to be consistent with the way MSMA codes the policies. And E stands for a form and R stands for procedure. So the IJ NDB dash now R is, um, a procedural policy and it's changed, and we've changed the title from Student Device of Internet Rules to Student Computer Lending and Usage Rules. Um, removing the MLTI reference and changing the time period when a student leaving the school must return the computer from ten days to immediately. So when you have a student that leaves our school system, but prior to this, we would give them ten days to return the computer. And, um, the, the tech committee thought, well, that's a good way to lose a computer. So, because people can leave town pretty quickly. So, um, it's just part of the policy. They have to return it immediately. Um, and these, both these policies, the, all the IJ NDBs, uh, the computer, were all, um, gone over by the tech committee at the school. Headed by Zapp, I guess, or is that totally me? Or is the tech committee?
I don't, I don't know where the tech committee chair is, but I'm on the tech committee.
But you're on it.
I'm on.
Sorry.
I helped.
Okay, I, I think we have the tech committee right here. Um, so anyway, that's, um, um, I think everybody got a copy of that too. I sent out extra copies because, um, I didn't realize that, um, Wendy had sent out copies. I just saw A's and I, so I sent everybody else another copy of these. Of these policies. So I just hope everybody read it. Uh, this particular, both policies. This was the, um, we do these together? The IJ NDB dash E is now definitely an E because it is a form. Uh, newly, it's a newly written contract for students to sign. And who did that? Who did that?
I worked here.
Okay, so Kim and Seth created this new form. So it's just a matter, it's taking the place of the old form and it's properly coded. So, for the student computer usage. So, okay, so that's it for this.
Okay, so just to clarify, the nine point four is, it's actually revising IJ NDB, turning it from E to R. And also we've changed the, uh, verbiage in it as well.
Some of the verbiage, yeah. A lot of it actually.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor of revising and re-coding policy, IJ NDB dash E to IJ NDB dash R? All in favor? Yes in the room? And we got a thumbs up from Claire. Motion passes. And now, just, we talked about it already, but let's, can I get a motion to adopt a new policy, IJ NDB dash E? Mary, second? Amber? Kathy already talked about it. Any discussion on that? All in favor of adopting policy, IJ NDB dash E? Room is unanimous. Claire, motion passes?
Jenny says yes. Oh, wait, hold on. Maybe Jimmy, Jenny might want to talk. Hold on. Jenny, you have to unmute yourself. She hit her. Hold on, she says. Stop. There she is. Jenny, you can talk.
All in favor?
Jenny, are you wanting to say something?
I just wanted to say that I was in favor.
Oh, she's in favor.
All right, I see another, uh, adjustments to the agenda. There's no, uh, motion to adjourn on here, so I'm gonna. Can I get a motion to adjourn, ladies? Yes. Second? I guess, Deb, all in favor? Thank you. Motion to adjourn, six fifty-nine. Thanks, everyone.
I am also in favor of authorizing expending the seventy-five thousand. Yep.